Punch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could silence your cellphones at this time and find a seat.
So first, let me thank everyone for coming and for the participation. I'd like to thank the following people for their participation in their efforts in tonight's presentation, and I'm sure that there are some extra people here that I haven't even had a moment to say thank you to, so please include yourself in this. Our teacher, Mrs. Lori Malkowski, for organizing this entire event. Students who staff, who helped to decorate, and there are many wonderful decorations made by all of our students at Eden that, Mr. Willis, we will make sure that you get at some point. Our bakers, Sandy Blaze, Laura Wincenziak, Patty Steinmetz, Ellen Kindley, and Janice O'Brien, because the desserts look wonderful, even though I didn't get near them. The PTA. Our musicians, Denise Omen, Mark Vona, and their students who played wonderful songs for us on our way in. Our Eden Boy Scout troops and our two escorts, Joshua Rice and Sean Klein. Our American Legion representative, Mr. Jim Blidey, where are you? Mr. Blidey, thank you for being here. Our Eden Town Supervisor, Glenn Nellis. I know, I saw him near the cookies, okay? It is during evenings like tonight, when we all come together, that the specialness of our Eden School community is the most evident to me. And so, Mr. Willis, will you please join me at the podium so we can address the board? Operation Recognition is a national program dedicated to honoring veterans who left school prior to graduation in order to serve during the World War II, Korea, or the Vietnam War. Tonight, we honor Mr. Kent Willis, who served in the United States Marine Corps from 1961 until 1965. Among other honors, Mr. Willis received the Good Conduct Medal twice during his service to our country. Mr. Willis, as you can see when you look around, the children, the community, the staff, and the Board of Education of Eden recognize you as a hero, and we are grateful to you. As the Superintendent of Eden Central School District, I am proud to be standing here tonight to award you with a high school diploma. And so, members of the Board of Education, as Superintendent of Eden Central School District, I certify that Mr. Kent Willis has met the requirements of a high school diploma through what he has learned during his time in the service. Will you all please join me in the presentation of his high school diploma? I should also say that we have all signed a small token of our appreciation to you, which is the Constitution of the United States. Thank you very much.
Who do you want to be?
Here?
Yeah, by the flag.
Get the flag.
He didn't.
Oh, the flag.
He didn't. He didn't. He's American town. That's perfect. I'm gonna take two pictures, so bear with me. Okay, ready? There's one. Yeah, let me take one more for good measure. There's two, perfect. I'll take one more. Very nice.
So, thank you, everyone. I've asked Mr. Willis to stay for a few moments. We're going to do one more presentation, and then the Board of Education will actually, upon approval, be walking out to do another meeting for just a couple of minutes, so feel free to stay for 10, 15 minutes, enjoy yourself, and eat the rest of the snacks. The second presentation that I would like to put forward, which is not up on our screen, is a congratulations to our girls volleyball team. Where are they? There they are. So, girls, come on up front. Come on up. So, you're all in a perfect place. You just stay right there, okay? For some of you who may not know, this girls' Eden varsity volleyball team won the Class C state championship this year, along with their coach, Steven Pierce. If that wouldn't be enough for us all to stand and applaud you, this is the fifth consecutive year that they have won the state championship. From what I can tell, I can't find anybody else who's done that. And so, we are so proud of you for leaving that legacy to Eden. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ann Sloan, and members of the Board of Education, and Eden Central School administrators. On behalf of the 2013 New York State Class C champion Eden girls volleyball team, I'd like to first thank you all for your support and acknowledgement that you've given to this year's team. I'd also like to thank the administration. They gave the girls a really nice breakfast yesterday morning. It was really wonderful, and two of the board members even were so kind to get up very early in the morning to support them, so we appreciate that. I also realize that participating in things like a state tournament, this far involves costs, and it's not lost on us, that the school continues to fund the costs during difficult budget times. We thank you for that consideration as well. However, I'd like to take a few minutes to outline the immeasurable value that school programs, like the volleyball program and many others, our musical, is starting its auditions right now, and involves hundreds of kids, very exciting. The immeasurable value that these programs offer a community like Eden. As a school district, we always believe that two of our main exit goals should be to prepare our students as best we can for the world beyond high school, and also to open as many doors as possible during the years each student spends here. Most teachers and parents know that the adolescent years can be confusing, awkward, and many times a bit overwhelming for 13- to 18-year-olds striving to find out who they are, where they fit in, and how they can make a meaningful connection to their school and community. These students often find their connection through a sport, a musical organization, a club, a position of leadership, or even a class that nurtures special talents, like an art class or technology. Eden volleyball is not just about winning championships. That's the measurable, tangible goal every year. But more importantly, we have worked hard to do our part in opening up many opportunities for Eden student athletes and preparing them for challenges beyond high school. And in this regard, Eden volleyball, like many of the programs we have, has actually paid for itself many times over. In the money even, it has saved community members via college opportunities and scholarships awarded our graduates. First, never mind college athletic scholarships for a moment. We have had so many alumni realize the advantage that they have had over counterparts when it came time to gain admission to highly selective schools. Of course, like all of our programs, we stress academic excellence to our players, but most parents who have had kids apply to college know that sometimes that's not even enough. And having an athletic department, a music department, an art department of a school go to bat for you with admissions is invaluable. And as a result, Eden volleyball alums have been accepted to top national universities and colleges such as Bucknell, Syracuse, UConn, Embry-Riddle, Aragonautical University, UNC, Colgate, University of Maryland, Clarkson, Georgia, Penn State, Siena, Skidmore, Ithaca, Swarthmore, American University, and many of the top SUNY schools. But speaking of scholarships, the conservative estimate, and we keep track every year, of athletic scholarship money handed out to Eden volleyball players from 2001 to present is roughly 1.5 million. It's actually about 1.47 to be exact, but that is, in a way, 1.5 million in savings for Eden District families. Now, of course, this one program cannot directly benefit all Eden families, as many of our other programs do in turn serve their particular population of students and their families in a variety of ways. But the statewide and national prestige that the program brings home to Eden puts us on the map in a very positive way, and certainly all school districts can benefit from positive press these days. But finally, what our program is most proud of, and I know all my colleagues share this in art programs, music programs, other sports programs, and the district should share in this pride, is that our form of volleyball student athletes have gone on to become productive professionals all over the United States. Our alumni include a director of marketing and business development for the Smith Haven Ball in Long Island, an account exec for Time Warner, a UB Law student, an airline pilot for SkyWest Airlines, an accounting and auditing exec for the New York State Treasury, a special ed. department chairperson in Virginia, a high school band director in Rwanda, an elementary teacher right here in Eden, a guidance counselor, a graphic designer, a banker at First Niagara, a vice president of sales for Intercollect Technologies in Chicago, a professional photographer, private business owner, a U.S. naval officer, and a project manager for a national chain store. Too often in education, we become myopic, and we see only the here and now, but success reads success. And the success stories that these girls behind me will write, and as their futures unfold, that's the real excitement here. Hopefully, their experience is just one of the many valuable programs that will provide for them and others, and maybe become a catalyst to ignite whatever unique talents they have to give. Again, we are very, very grateful that the Board of Education continues to value the many programs that make a difference in our students' lives, and we hope that the Board continues to support these programs fully so that we can continue to offer our students a world of memories and a world of opportunities. So finally, for our captains, Heather and Taylor, who are here, we'd like to present the 2013 Class C state championship plaque to you with our sincere gratitude for the support that you and our administration have given. Thank you very much.
Congratulations and thank you again.
I move that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss an administrative contract.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
We'll be back in a few moments.
I think we have a presentation.
Yep.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Um, I'm speaking at the beginning of the session because what I'm speaking about is policy 7250, which is a brand-new policy. You voted on it first reading last month, and you'll be voting hopefully later today on adopting this policy at the second reading. This policy is called Student Use of Personal Technology, and this is a brand-new policy, unlike so many of the other policies, you might just be voting on changes or whatever. And when I met with the policy committee, Colin asked me if I would come and explain this policy a little bit. It's a hot topic in education across the nation, as it's more fondly referred to as BYOD, Bring Your Own Device. The second paragraph, because our audience doesn't have it, I just wanted to talk about what devices we're talking about here for students. Personal technology includes all existing and emerging technology devices that can take photographs, record or play audio or video, input text, upload and download media, connect to or receive information from the Internet, and transmit or receive messages, telephone calls or images. Examples of personal technology includes, but are not limited to iPods, MP3 players, iPad, Nook, Kindle, and other tablet PCs, laptop and notebook computers, personal digital assistants, PDAs, cellphones, smartphones such as BlackBerrys, iPhones, or Droids, as well as any device with similar capabilities. Unacceptable devices shall include, but are not limited to gaming devices or consoles, laser pointers, modems, or routers, or televisions. I have a hard time mentioning, carrying around a television still. Primarily, what I wanted to talk about is that what this means for students using our Wi-Fi, our wireless network, and give you some information about why we're going in the direction we are if we adopt this today. I need to give you just a little brief history of where we are with our wireless. Our current wireless was installed with our telephone project back in 2005. The wireless units in buildings were very, very scattered. It was not a great system, which is why those of you that were sitting on the board here remember, in June 2012, I came and kind of begged you with a great deal that we could pick up a used system from Pine Valley, which we did with Bosie's help, we implemented last year. Basically, we took all the wireless units that we had from the phone project that were in the high school and the elementary, moved them to the GLP, which beefed up that system there, and then we put those newer devices in the high school and here at the elementary school. What it's done for the district in the last year is, like our mobile carts over here, previously, our wireless system was so weak that we had to put wireless units on each cart, so if we had laptops or iPad carts, they could really only work within the range in that area. Since we implemented the new system last year, now we've taken off those units that can work with the ones that are in the walls and in the ceiling, and teachers can now share laptop carts. They could get it in like in the first grade room, which I like to use as an example, because they're doing a wonderful job with this, with the iPads too. They can share them, like, you know, maybe I'll take six over to my classroom, and you could have six in your classroom, and we can use them, and I think that we're more fully using them. The GLP has this added capability, but it does not have the other feature that came with those new units, which was the guest network, which we're going to be talking about with the student use and guest use. At the elementary school here and at the high school, we basically put in a tandem wireless network. It goes through the same pipe, but it's its own separate network to get to the Internet that has all the regulations that schools have on that network. It has all the things that we have to have for students, which is no access to pornography, no access to gaming, no access to shopping, no access to email, or, sitting here going, or social network. So, with no common guest network, we still have regulations that we have to follow with the school district. So, besides meeting with the policy committee, I've also met with the admin council and with the department chair committee in October, but I also met with Bosie, who helps us support our network, and they do have some great concerns with opening this up just wide open all day long. Because these two networks do run side by side, they still go through the same pipe, and they're afraid that that pipe might not be strong enough, because it's all built on that 2005 architecture, to handle if we just went wide open. So, our plan right now is to open up the guest network after hours. Basically, from 1:00 to 11:00, that allow students to have access to our Wi-Fi and guests, and also on the weekends for like sporting events. So, that is our plan. Again, it's a strong, hard way to get there, to tell you why we're planning to do that.
Does it cover all of Eden?
No, just.
Just the school?
Just the elementary school and the high school. It would not be available at the GLP because it does not have the guest network. So, in all the, in all the buildings.
Then why would you use it after hours?
After hours? Because you know how when you go to like Starbucks or something and you sign on, you can either use your own system, or you could log in here and it helps you save on your minutes? It's a good way to put it, yeah.
But Lucinda, then parents would be able to use it as well when they're here.
Right. If you had a sporting event.
Sporting events, yes.
2:30 or something.
Well, sporting events also after school activity, especially for the high school here.
If they want to do homework and whatnot?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they have to wait after.
More parents watching a game.
I had heard you mention that social networking is not available at this point?
No, it is not available.
Are you sure?
On our network, it isn't available. Now, I have to tell you that a lot of students have it on their own, their own, just like probably many of you have your own 3G, 4G plans. If they're in our buildings, they're using those, with those personal contracted plans, I can't upload those.
Okay.
So, they might be doing social networking through those systems, yes.
You can get on with yours.
It's 3G.
Okay.
My question is to Molly. So, Mrs. Carstead was talking about the ability to get onto those, like at sporting events or so. Can you envision that being something that the students and the parents would find useful here, and what might be some of the more specific things that they would do?
Um, I think so. I mean, I personally use mine for social networking a lot, so I use my 4G, but I could see definitely parents going on, and especially if you're checking your grades online, I think it's very helpful, the Wi-Fi.
I eat last night at the concert, you know.
The concert?
Parents check stuff while we're waiting, because they had to get the kids there an hour early.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
And is there an extra expense attached to it?
No, there isn't, so.
My question to you is, what would it take to get GLP on the same line? You knew I was gonna ask you, so.
Um, I'm gonna put it right out there, I would not recommend buying more devices at this point that was already, or buy, we bought used, almost a year and a half ago now. I would think that in our upcoming capital project, we might look at beefing up the network across the board, and that's kind of what.
When you say across the board, you mean the whole campus?
Yes, so that we can actually connect and connect all three buildings and take it to the next level. 2005 is, we're starting to push that limit already.
The technology limit, as well as most of the students in that facility probably don't have the technology.
Social media.
Yeah. The benefit there is not as much.
But it is limiting where we are using it already, the guest network at the elementary school and at the high school, is where we've been using it on staff development days, where we bring in outside trainers that want to use their own equipment or whatever. We're very limited in what we can offer at the GLP. I know the class training, they had to move to the lab instead of a room that they planned to use because of that issue, so to be able to have that for our staff and guests that way.
So, will you be able to switch it off and on?
Yes.
So you can, so if everybody's out of school and you do have that.
Yep, we set a schedule.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. Okay, hearing none. I move that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum, A through O.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Speakers?
Anyone who wants to speak for two minutes? Looks like none.
Okay, new business. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Alicia Campbell, no relation, be accepted effective November 15, 2013.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Appointments. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Robin Ralph be appointed on probation as a cleaner, effective October 28, 2013 through April 27, 2014. Salary is based upon CSCEA contract level two, step one.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sheila Sikow be appointed on probation as a teacher aide, effective November 18, 2013 through May 17, 2014. Salary is based upon CSCEA contract level four, step one.
Discussion? Sheila is here, so congratulations, Sheila.
Congratulations, Sheila.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sarah Keef be appointed on probation as a one-to-one teacher aide, effective November 21, 2013 through May 20, 2014. Salary is based upon CSCEA contract level four, step one.
Discussion? All in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Now, it only goes till May.
That's their probationary status.
Oh, okay.
And then after that, pending good behavior, let's say, until May, then they would become a permanent employee.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Is she here? I can't see her.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the donation of a 1978 Steinway Studio Piano, serial number 456033, model 45, valued at between $6,600 and $7,000, be accepted from Susan Adams.
Discussion?
Is Mr. Vona here? Is anybody from the music department here? Then I'll talk about it if they're not. This piano was, I got, I received a phone call from the daughter, Susan Campbell, regarding this piano back in the summer, asking if it was something that we would like to have donated, and it was owned by Thelma Winter, which is a very familiar name to all of us, and I said absolutely. And so, I just want to thank the music department and Mr. Vona for all the work that they did in going out and seeing it, taking a look at it, making sure it came here in one piece. It's a true treasure for our district to have.
Is it going in the high school?
I believe it's here.
Is it, is it a, is it an upgrade from what we had?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. So much so that we got rid of the other one.
And also, Sammy, her daughters play in a lot of the plays here at the school.
Oh, good.
Her daughters have.
This would be fun for her to play on.
Well, they're not here now, they're graduate, graduates.
Okay.
And they've been in Broadway plays, so they were very.
Wow.
She had her children.
Maybe she would like to come back as a guest pianist.
For girls, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, they sing, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the donation of a Gemenhart flute, serial number 093188, valued at approximately $250, be accepted from Diane Kuns for use at Eden Elementary School.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the donation of a Bundy flute, serial number 167162, valued at approximately $200, be accepted from Laura Winciak for use at Eden Elementary School.
Discussion?
Yeah, where'd all these musical instruments come from? Is there?
These people.
I don't know.
Was there a call for donations?
No, it's no call. Mrs. Thomas, do you know?
There's one call.
Just the timing?
Food donations. All in favor?
And the piano, yeah, it was a long time in coming, so, you know, that's, it just happened to be on this one where, but it was a long time ago.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following changes in transportation hours be approved. Bonnie Gable from 4.5 to 6 hours for midday run, Deborah Barton from 5.5 to 5.75 hours due to earlier departure for Ormsby, Julian Blenkow from 4 to 5.5. Blencow from four to five-point-two-five hours due to adding Baker Road to route.
Second.
Discussion?
Is, what is our policy? Does anyone know on when it's, when, um, they get their benefits?
Uh, we do it prorated. Uh, the benefits are prorated from four hours and above.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the combining of the North Collins Junior-Senior High School with the Eden Junior-Senior High School for athletic participation in the sport of football, inclusive of modified junior varsity and varsity levels, if available, for the two thousand and fourteen fall sports season be approved, and the superintendent and athletic director be authorized to sign the required Section Six request for said combination in an athletic sharing agreement between both parties.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. Please, um, now, do the cheerleaders come along with the football players?
They do not.
They do not?
They do not.
Okay, and it's only football?
Only football. So, let me give you a little bit of background, and Marissa, please, if I admit something, please feel free to jump in, okay? Is, we have a wonderful football team that works really hard, but we're shy just a couple of kids, so that they can't necessarily sub out during the games. North Collins does not have a football team, but yet they have students who want to play football. And my understanding is even before my time here, is that this conversation has been ongoing for a while. The Board of Education of North Collins started to have the conversation, they put a survey out to their students and their parents, saying, would you want to do this? The Board of Education, last week in North Collins, approved the concept of sharing as what is up for recommendation for you tonight. The contract that is enclosed is something that would come at another board meeting, because the Section Six guidelines are, is that you approve, um, just that, the concept of sharing, and then Section Six actually has to be the one to approve us to share, or to merge a team, and then we will bring that contract back up to you to take a look at for the details. It would be called the Eden Football Team, um, and be recognized as the Eden Football Team. The idea of both the athletic director, Marissa Falcaro, and North Collins is that students who are on this football team, regardless of what school, would have equal weight. So, um, they play, they sub, that's what they do. And I think it's important for the Board of Education and the community to recognize that there may be times when an Eden student is playing and a North Collin student is sitting, or vice versa, a North Collins student is, whatever the opposite was of what I just said, playing and Eden is sitting, because they, they, they would not be defined by either school at that point. Marissa, did I leave anything out? Okay.
There's a lot of combining of schools that's going on across the region, especially in the sport of football, when it does take, it requires a lot of individuals to play, it does pay a toll on a lot of young kid bodies. Um, so you're finding a lot of school districts are combining for football. We happen to be one of the smallest B schools, um, that are around, so most of the time we have twenty-two kids going up against forty-five kids. Um, it makes a difference.
They're tired.
We're very competitive, um, and I just think we could do it a step further. Uh, North Collins, they don't have a football team, but they have a Little Loop team that plays Little Loop, Eden North Collins football, and they have for a number of years. I get phone calls every year from parents from North Collins that wish to have a kid play here. It's not just a simple phone call, there are steps that have to be taken. As Mrs. Angelo said, this is a conversation that is actually, um, been talked about between myself, um, the former superintendent, um, North Collins, and now we believe we have a great contract in store, and we are ready to make the approval.
Could you talk a little bit about why just football, and what you're finding in some of the other districts that didn't do just one sport?
Mostly because, you'll find some other teams, the reason I'm not wishing for any other sports, is we do a pretty good job of fielding most of our teams as it is. We have great numbers, and I don't ever want to get to a point where I'm cutting an Eden resident for a North Collins resident, um, and that would happen if you did that in a basketball, or a soccer, or.
I just wanted to add that actually, I'm on the New York Collins School Board number, but you actually can't, it's illegal for you to cut an Eden resident and have a North Collins student on your team, so that I think will maybe alleviate some concerns from some parents about their child making the team. You know, so you can't, you can't cut a, you can't cut an Eden resident and put a North Collins student in.
Are you Shannon?
Yes.
Hi, Shannon. Thank you for coming.
So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, Eden families were aware of that, this law, you know, so if they had that concern, you know, that's obviously can't happen, so.
There are other school districts, Marissa, that have done more than one sport and then changed their mind about it, right?
Yes. Collins and East Aurora, they, they merged for three sports, or I should say, they combined for three sports, and just recently, as yesterday, they demerged for two of them. Um, and again, it came down to some controversies of how, how the students are recognized, um, and the whole school, they weren't, um, they jumped into it a little too quickly. There is another school that, um, State, um, same thing, they merged for a smaller sport, um, and they decided, the parents decided afterwards that it was not what they wanted to do.
Okay.
But this, this isn't something that we've just jumped into, this is something that we've given a lot of thought about, we've looked at, um, we've looked at the numbers of how it plays, if we would still be a B school, if we would move up to a N school, which to most people, they might not understand that.
Sure.
So, you know, we would stay at the current level that we are at, at a B school with football, and we just think that right now, it's a great start for us to try with football. Um, we also don't want to destroy anything that North Collins has and take away from their, um, their sports. They have a wonderful soccer program, they have a very good girls volleyball program, so we don't want to sit there and say, let's take all of North Collins on, because I, we don't want to destroy another school's athletic program, so I think just maintaining with football is the way to go.
Thank you, Shannon, for coming in. Do you have anything else to add to this?
No, I, I appreciate, um, the Eden Football Board for considering.
We appreciate you considering it too, because I'm still sure we could beat Alden.
Hopefully you might be interested in sharing something else.
This has been going on for several years now. Uh, Mrs. Kraus and I have spent, you know, numerous years on dealing with the Eden Little Loop program, which our children have both participated in. So I think this is a great first step as far as, you know, creating a partnership where we can, uh, share services, especially in this day with a lot of unfunded mandates, you know, a great, you know, beginning to a working partnership that I think will, will progress and hopefully carry over further than sports.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resolution regarding overreliance on standardized testing be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
I'll take it. Discussion?
Yeah, the only discussion I'd like to say is that, um, I noticed two weeks ago, um, that the, uh, the, Mr. King, the superintendent or the school district commissioner of New York State, basically alluded to the fact that he was going to reduce some of the testing. He's come out and stated that about two weeks ago, and I think they're starting with eighth grade math.
Yes.
The duplication of eighth grade math test, and they're going to look further into other exams as well. So, it's a good first start.
It's, it's actually a really good point that Mr. Breeden puts, brings in, because that, that requirement for the eighth grade exam and for our accelerated students is actually a federal mandate, not a state mandate, and so what New York State Education Department was doing a couple of weeks ago was actually going to the United States Department of Education to seek that waiver. And, um, we at Eden School would, would say that we're in favor of that for eighth grade math, which we currently do for eighth grade science now. Of course, every, every positive comes with, with a question, and so by our accelerated students not taking the eighth grade math assessment, um, we lose the highest scores, so to speak, you would guess, on our eighth grade assessment. So, we though believe that that's the most important thing to do to our students who are accelerated in math, so that they're not taking two or three different exams for the same thing. So, we're in favor of that.
I'd like to thank Patty Kraus for putting it together, I thought it was really nice. Thanks, Patty.
That's very good job. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the three hundred dollar one-oh-five-H contribution be made available to the support staff no later than December second, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a point-six FTE special ed teacher position be approved effective as early as December eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Discussion? I had a question. When do we know exactly what the levels could be in the GLP class sizes?
It would be nice if parents at the lowest levels, at their earliest levels, K one and two, would, um, enroll their students before budget season, but they don't. It would also, if they can't do that and they don't know that they're coming to another school district, be great, um, if in fact they enrolled even before the start of school. But there's so much mobility that happens in families that many times we don't know. And so, for the most part, school districts will budget for that uncertainty at the lowest grade levels, recognizing that even one or two students makes a very unstable classroom.
Did the enrollment increase? I mean, I know there's more kids and it makes sense it increased, but, but did it increase from last year's enrollment?
Lucinda says it's stable. When we look at the numbers across the board for K one and two, they're stable, but we have bubbles in other areas and we have decreases in others. What we're finding, though, is that the enrollments that do come our way are students with special needs. And so, when you have a higher percentage of students with special needs in a classroom of twenty-three or twenty-two, it, it becomes a more intensive classroom. We are looking at two first grade classrooms of close to twenty-four, one of twenty-two and one of twenty-one. So, we could theoretically take the two of twenty-four and create four classrooms of twenty-one or twenty-two, except that those classrooms that are small were kept small by Mrs. Carter, because there were six or seven students with special needs and they're creating a more intensive classroom.
Do we know what the levels are currently in kindergarten?
Kindergarten? Can anyone speak to that? Say? Eighty-five across the board for four classrooms, so twenty, twenty-one in a class.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen room rental agreement with the Teacher Center for two classrooms, rooms twenty-seven and twenty-eight, at GLP Primary School be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen contract for the Director of Finance be approved effective January first, two thousand and fourteen, as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the two thousand thirteen, two thousand and fourteen appropriations be increased by five thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents to twenty-five million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents to account for increased revenues.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Dave Martin.
Good evening. Before I begin the two presentations that I have to go and give you this scene name, which I promise, um, she can't, what I would be very grateful about, um, I just want to remind my counterparts and you as well, if you happen to see Mark Gage tomorrow, and Mark is an employee in my department, uh, tomorrow Mark says twenty-fifth year of employment with the district. So, if you do see him, would you please congratulate him? Mrs. Angelo asked me to give you a, an update on the Safety Committee. Traditionally, in the past, Ms. Lencana has been in charge of the Safety Committee, she asked me to take that over since I'm more in tune to what happens throughout all of the buildings, where Ms. Lencana really is pretty much in tune to what goes on here at the high school, but may miss a few things at the other two buildings. And it kind of fit more into my job description than it did hers, so I, I agreed to take that over. And we did have our first meeting on October twenty-third. We have fifteen committee members, of which, uh, we have school board members, we have community members, we have pretty much the entire administration involved in it, and as well as myself and some staff members. During that meeting, I presented a binder, and Mr. Shepherd Hett is, is the school board member, and I did bring his binder tonight to present to him, but since he's not here, he can't see it, but you'll want me to take a look through it, um, and the areas that we, uh, we talked about. And traditionally, we're going to have about three or four of these meetings a year, we'll go over things, uh, like safety loss things, that the insurance company is involved in, letting us know how much the reserves are, that they're putting away to, to deal with the losses. We'll talk about some of the inspections that we have to carry throughout the year, fire inspections, the hearing inspection, structural, pool, we'll talk about capital construction project, because as a Safety Committee, it's our obligation to make sure that certain safety procedures are followed during capital construction as far as access to the students and what goes on. We talked about capital construction and, and, uh, what the potential is for that. We spent a significant amount of time talking about lockdown under the New York Safe, uh, Safe Schools Act, um, and we had a really spirited discussion that probably went the best part of an hour. And we are going to meet again in December and continue that discussion, so that when we revise our safety plan, which is the next goal, we'll be able to implement the changes and recommendations into that safety plan, redistribute it, so that it is a real cohesive document, and everybody understands how the lockdown is going to happen, as well as any other disasters that may occur throughout the, the, uh, the school day or even after school. We're looking at the, uh, the charts that we're giving out to the teachers, trying to simplify things, we want to make sure that it's pretty simple stupid as to what you have to do in the event that something is, is, uh, announced over the P.A. system. And we're right now limiting it to that you can help me. Lockout? Lockdown? Shelter in place? Is that correct?
Correct.
And evac? And evac.
And evac, okay. Those are the things that we're going to dwell on, and those will be the only things that will ever be announced. So, we want to make sure that everybody is aware of how they will respond when those announcements are made. So, it's, it's been a good, um, spirited discussion, as I said, with, with all of the administrators and the people on the board, and, uh, we're looking forward to meeting again. And the only other thing that I want to mention is that the insurance company did come out this past week, and they do a five-year review of the facilities, and I should have that report by the next Safety Committee meeting. So, excuse me, um, if you have any real questions about the Safety Committee, please feel free to ask. If you want to come to a meeting, there, you're more than welcome. Again, there'll be, uh, December ninth will be the next meeting, and we'll be meeting, I believe, in the superintendent's office somewhere around noon.
And David, if I might just add on to that. First of all, one of the reasons, the primary reason is student safety, and so that's obviously the reason why we want to have a good safety plan. And this really was a chance to reactivate our Safety Committee and really bring it to the next level. Apart from that, and obviously student safety is paramount, but apart from that, another reason we as a district want to make sure that we have an active Safety Committee is by doing so, we keep our insurance rate discounts in effect. And our insurance company said, had we not had a really fully participating Safety Committee, we were in danger of losing, or in danger of not being able to keep our discounts. So, Mike Centrone from Utica National Insurance was there. I will say with this, I think he was highly impressed at the level of this, our first meeting for this year. It was a very good discussion. I did want to thank Pat as well as David. I mean, Pat obviously has building-level duties, but she certainly is still very actively involved with David as well, so it actually was a very good committee meeting, so.
Yeah, she's a great resource. And so are the Police Department. They are participating as well, so they have made some significant suggestions as to where we need to go from the outside perspective and the response perspective. One of the other things that we did do is I did send all of the administrators a link to what's called the National Incident Management System, NIMS, which is what most emergency services, almost all emergency services throughout this nation are now running under. And I've asked them to please take the online course that's there, so that in the event that there is an incident, they understand what role they play in the operation. Because once emergency services are activated, the control shifts from the school district to that emergency service that's activated. If it's a fire, it's the fire department. If it's the Police Department for a police action, it's the Police Department. But they want to use our knowledge and our understanding of the teachers, the students, the buildings, and everything that's involved in the operation of the school district to make good informed decisions. So, for them to do that, it's important that we understand the process that they're going to use to dole out responsibilities.
So, do you mind? If, I think if I'm following along correctly, what happens is when other agencies, Hamburg, Orchard Park, get called to an emergency in a school district, perhaps Eden, that everybody understands the same thing?
Correct.
Right?
It's a common law, common knowledge, common terminology. It all flows together, basically like a flow chart, a hierarchy.
And I just want to thank Dave. I mean, he did step up to the plate and obviously has jumped right into this, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I make an observation quick?
Sure, go ahead.
In this book that you have for Paul here, the district's safety plan, Safety Team, are, they all need to be updated as far as?
They do.
Okay. I didn't know if you had seen that.
It started smaller, and all of a sudden, people jumped in and said, "I need to be a part of this. There's things that I want to present, and I want to be a part of this committee." So, there's, right now, there's about 15 members. So, again, that's got to be updated.
Well, I mean, like, the Board of Education member is not still Steve Cerny, it's Paul Shepherd.
Yeah, that's what he's.
That's what he's saying.
Correct. We will be updating the whole book.
The old safety.
Yeah, it's from April.
It's something that we are currently working on.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a number of things, even with Rich Schaefer's retirement.
Exactly.
That all has to be updated.
Okay.
We will get to that. It's just we need to get this lockdown and all of the things that are, I won't say more important, but pretty critical at this point.
Sure.
Because they involve so many people out of the way. And then we'll update the formal documents to reflect those changes.
Are there other police agencies on this committee other than the Eden Police Department?
No, not at this point.
Okay.
Basically, I'm leaving that up to John. John is on the committee, and he and I have been talking about what would happen and how access would be gained should there need to be access by another outside agency. We're already formulating a plan, and I have to use his best judgment to provide me with that information.
Because it would come from the Police Department, not from the school?
Correct.
That's why.
Correct.
So, in the event of an emergency that is district-wide, it is the Eden Police Department that puts the call out to other agencies, not the school district that does. I would like to say, though, that we are in communication with other agencies in the training sessions that we go to. So, we have Erie County, we have Sheriff, there was Greg Butcher, who's part of all of the hazmat, so there are other agencies that are working with all Erie 2 and all of Erie 1 districts and across the state.
Excuse me, they have also, just on board notes, they have also already run drills in this building where multiple police departments, Sheriff's Department, State Police Department, Eden Police Department, North Towns, have all come in and worked together on one of our days off and ran drills, and they're all familiar with the building.
Was that yearly?
They, I know they did it last year, and they are planning on coming in again this year.
You could be the intruder.
No. Let Barb be the intruder.
It is, it is pretty easy.
Yeah, it is.
So, all right. The other topic that I want to talk about is basically, I attended a meeting last week that was basically power generation. It was an international meeting, and it gave me the opportunity to talk to some vendors that I would not normally be exposed to. And the reason I really wanted to go and talk to them is because of the potential for a capital project. I want to know what we can do to reap more savings out of our existing cogen plant through the heat recovery process and using that to generate perhaps air conditioning. I want to know what we can do with solar, because right now, the big emphasis seems to be on renewable energy rather than using resources, natural resources. I know power plants right now are trying to get away from coal. They want that off of their profile because it is a dirty power. So, they're looking at natural gas, they're looking at solar, they're looking at wind. And this gave me an opportunity to talk to some of those people and to throw some of the ideas that I have out there for a capital project that, A, might generate some revenue, and B, might provide an additional benefit to the district. So, I did attend the conference. I was hoping to get into a few of the specialty classes, but they wouldn't let me in. I didn't have the little kind of pass. So, I couldn't get to some of those. But it was very, very informative, and I made a number of contacts that I think are going to pan out for the district as time goes on. And as that progresses, I'm sure I'll be able to share more about what I learned and some of the things, the ideas I have. But until we get to that phase of the project development, I really don't want to say much about it at this point. At this point, that's pretty much all I have to inform you about. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to take them.
Is Bob Stickney on the stand?
Bob Stickney is not. Bob and I have talked over the years. I have the town's disaster plan. He has what was the school's disaster plan. We've shared that. So, as we progress and get our act together on the Safety Committee level and get everything in place the way it needs to, then I'm going to send it back over to him and say, "This is what you can anticipate." And the same would happen for the Police Department and the Fire Department. But until we get to that point, I don't really want to muddy the waters between the two businesses yet.
I think it's a great question that Barb asks, because when I first came, he approached me about a community disaster, because obviously we can move people, which the town itself has a problem doing. So, it is a good question, and I'm really glad you asked that.
There's a number of agencies that have looked at the school and are aware of our situation, particularly because we generate our own power. We are a sheltering facility for Red Cross already. When the town went through the FEMA program to become a disaster-resistant community, FEMA took a real good look at the district. I couldn't get any money out of them, but they were real happy to know that there was somebody around that in case there was a major disaster, might have some power, and they could get trucks fixed or those kind of things. So, you know, we did a good thing, but, you know, better we can get some money for them.
Now, at the beginning of the year, there were a couple issues with the generator. Simple fixes? Simple fixes? Well, obviously, they're fixed.
It's when the lights flicker that we all just kind of shudder, yeah.
One of the things I did go to this conference, one of the reasons I was there is I wanted to talk to the manufacturer of that control that was electronic. It just died, is basically what happened.
And then it cascaded down.
And then it just cascaded.
So, was the one computer unit in there?
It was basically a control for the generator.
Okay.
And when it did what it did, it shut that generator down, which threw the entire load on the other generator that was more than what it could stand. So, it went down, and then the diesel came on and it couldn't take the load, so it went down, so we stayed shut for a while.
Okay.
Until I figured the whole thing out and was able to get a couple of those back together again and happy, and then I was able to throw the building back.
Now, are the control panels themselves, are they able to be upgraded to newer technology?
They can, yes.
Okay. And that would be helpful?
It would be. I'm just not sure how helpful, and whether the financial expenditure is going to provide any additional savings or anything that's going to be worthwhile.
Okay.
You know, so, you know, are there new controls? Yeah, there are, but are we going to reap any benefits? I don't know. I really don't.
Okay. It would be worth exploring, though, because we have a reserve for the cogen, so, yeah.
We do. I just need to be careful about it, because if we have to do a major, major rebuild someplace, we need to have that money. That's all.
I understand.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. For me, I've got three topics to discuss here. First is the Budget Advisory Team. First of all, I want to say for the community that was actually here, during the meeting, we had the doors closed inadvertently. I know a lot of people were out in the hall with everything that was going on. Next time, we'll have to leave the doors open. I think most people thought it was a closed meeting. It was open for all, so in any future meetings, please feel free to come and watch the meetings. Everyone is welcome. This was the first meeting of the Budget Advisory Team. And the Budget Advisory Team is really brought together for the board, the community, the staff, as many different components of the community that we can bring together to educate about the budget process and to make it a transparent process and to gain ideas to help us as we develop the budget for the coming year. And I would have to say, it was, I think, a very good first meeting that we had. Everybody had a chance to give their ideas as to, number one, why they joined the committee and what they're actually looking for out of the committee. And then we went over some brief overview as to what goes into the district finances, the mission of the committee. And so, I think it was a wonderful first step, and thank you to all of the committee members who are still here, because it's now been a while for those community members who are still here. And I think it's going to be a definite value to the district. Next, transportation rates. One of the things that we're looking at, and almost one of the first things that was brought to my attention when I started here, was a visit from some of the drivers in the Transportation Department, saying that with our change from last year to this year and the increase in the transportation rates, we're really pricing ourselves out of the market and making it very difficult for our students and organizations to actually take our transportation to go to field trips and other events that are going on. And it became apparent quite early that those funds, which should be used for other educational purposes, were going to pay for busing specifically. And whether it be the PTA or outside organizations, they now were looking at other agencies to fill that void because they could no longer afford what we're doing. So, looking at that, I looked at the model that we actually used before, and looking at that, and as you see with the attachment, it, the way we actually calculate the hourly costs as well as the mileage, the hourly cost of what we're actually looking at, I think I'm recommending a new rate of 3471, and the reason why is-
As opposed to what?
As opposed to 4305. And last year, it was 3305, I believe, or 33, it was in the 33 range, I just remember off the top of my head.
Thirty-two.
Thank you very much. And the reason why, what goes into that, is taking a look at the driver's time, and what we're actually using for that is the highest rate we can on the pay scale. It may not necessarily be the highest rate driver who's necessarily going, but we're actually taking that into account, using the highest rate, so on average, it's working out there. And we're adding in all of the benefits with that as well. So, the rate that we're asking for, 3471, is a fair rate to cover all of our costs for that, for the driver time. Next, looking at the mileage. The mileage rate is basically, you want to make sure that you're accounting for all the miles that you're putting on the vehicle throughout the year, and taking into account all the costs in the department outside of staffing, because we're accounting for that in the mileage, in the hourly rate. Looking at all of those costs, dividing by the total number of mileage in the year, gives you your mileage rate. So, what I'm recommending from that is very simple, from the appropriation report, looking at the total cost of 386, 726, divided by the mileage, and it gives us a mileage rate of 85 cents per mile, and which is a decrease of, from the $1.25 to 85, but is an increase from last year from?
Eighty-five cents.
Thank you. So, that is a fair going rate as well.
So, the 85 cents per mile is what we charge?
Is what we will be charging moving forward.
And we were charging what?
A dollar twenty-five. And again, the organizations are saying we can't afford that.
Are we making profit off of this?
We are not losing any money. We are actually making a slight profit, because when we are looking at some of the things such as adding the benefits, we're already paying for the benefits anyway. So, yes, we are making a slight profit. So, we're not making a killing at the expense of the students. Right.
And if it's too high, we're not going to-
No one's using us now.
Right. As an example, I will say with the ski club, they are not taking a bus at all this year, but when they first came, they said they were going to have a real trouble getting buses because they couldn't afford our rate and looking around. As it turns out, they're just not taking a bus because the kids are-
No kids.
Correct. Exactly.
Seriously?
Correct. Yeah. But that's an example there, so. Just puts us back in line of where we should be. Okay.
Very good.
If I may, I think it's important to note that the PTA funds a number of our field trips at the elementary and primary levels. And so, keeping our kids on our own buses with our own drivers is important to us as a district. And so, I appreciate Tom taking, and Rose, taking the time to work on this.
And next, from the last meeting, the topic of building usage did come up, and one of the requests from Mr. Campbell was for us to take a look at building usage rates. So, what I provided in the attachments there on the first page is just taking a snapshot of what we looked at last year and who used our buildings from outside organizations. And I think if you take a look at this and using just a sample, if you look across the top, just a sample rate structure, which is certainly not out of line in the market when you compare it to other school districts, but looking at a sample rate structure, you see what this district would have brought in in funds last year on the bottom right. Now-
If we charged everyone.
If we charged everyone. Now, looking at that, I believe this board has said, looking at that, we as a board want to look at who we would charge, what the parameters of that would actually be, what is important to the community as a whole. My personal recommendation from being a conservative person is that we adopt some sort of rate structure, whatever the community is actually comfortable with. As budgets get tighter, it certainly doesn't hurt you ask for a fair share in terms of our usage. We do actually incur costs as, you know, the buildings are being used, they need to be cleaned, they need to be maintained, there is an actual cost to that. So, and while it is a great community service to have buildings just open, there is a physical cost for maintaining that as well.
What about when we start taking in more money? Is there a liability? Because usually, when you take money for something, there's a liability, whereas if you don't take the money, then-
No. We actually, when the clubs are, or organizations are using our facilities, they actually do provide the insurance certificate. We are covered there. We make sure before anyone uses that, that we are fully covered. And so, what you see on Sheet 1, again, just in aggregate from the previous year, and what I've attached is documentation for you guys to look at and start talking about are, number one, our policy on building usage, and then some sample policies from other districts as to what they do as well. So, it gives you a little something to look at.
So, are you in effect sending it back to legal and policy to look at?
I think that would be a wonderful place for it to go next, yes. So, it at least gives you something that you can work with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. We are going to put out a global- We are going to put out a global connect to our district parents that on December 5th, from 6:00 to 7:00, this precedes the concert that night, that there will be a parent infirmation night. The topic of conversation will be the data dashboard and state assessments. Lucinda Karstedt, our Director for Technology, has graciously offered to host that with me, since she has much more in-depth information. I think that there's an awful lot of conversation that's coming through the NISPA clips and just through the newspaper regarding the data dashboard and state assessments, and so this will be an opportunity for our district to share with parents what we know, what our district is mandated to do. And it's not a pro or a con, it's just simply of an informative parent night, so we'll be pushing that information out as well. I'd appreciate anybody who wants to come, or any questions that people want to give to us ahead of time, because we may not necessarily know them all. Um, I don't have this on the agenda, but there are a couple of other things that I'd like to put into my report. Congratulations to our students and staff in the band and orchestra concert last night. It was a fabulous concert as a first for the evening. Um, we are sending off our long-term sub and bringing back Sarah Roberts, but I would have to tell you that at no time would anybody know that there was a break in staff, because the kids were focused and on point. They were extremely professional, it was very good. The second one is that Eden is one of seven finalists for the Kenny Awards for our performance of Beauty and the Beast last year. This is a huge honor to even be a finalist, and so our students will be performing in May at Chase, which was also a lot of fun for them. Uh, trying to read my notes that I wrote. Also, congratulations to all of our fall sports teams and to Marissa Felacar for a very, very successful season. Some of our sports teams are just starting now, like basketball, right? And so, um, if you, if you're aware, the further we go into sectionals and, and into states, the less likely those kids are to get onto a winter sports team on time. So basketball had three students until this week because of volleyball, for the most part. But it was a phenomenal season, so thank you for all that you do and the coaches with that. And then also, a thank you to Kelly Morgan-Larosa for hosting the parent night a few weeks ago, along with Nicole Lauer and Suelen Weberg. That one was on the Common Core and the Common Core learning standards, and my understanding is, is that there will be future nights for parents who want to get involved and figure out how they can help their students, or just exactly what is the Common Core and what are the learning standards and what to do. So thank you, Kelly. And then lastly, I know that Lori is still here. You put a phenomenal effort into tonight, which we are very, very grateful to you, and I know that... I know that you had lots of little helpers and big helpers, but it wouldn't have happened without you, and you just simply came forward without anybody even asking, so thank you. It made it very special to the family. And I'm speaking to the chamber tomorrow night. Four corners, and I had to think about that one for a minute, I was like, where am I going? At the four corners, they have asked me to speak about partnerships between the chamber and the school, so I will share with you afterwards. It's on my calendar, Mr. Burns, I'd have to look.
It's their annual dinner.
I can take a guest if you want to go.
Maybe.
Okay. Okay. And I will come back with information for you regarding that as well. That's all I have.
Board report. Patty?
Yeah. I just need to make a statement. A parent had questioned Sandy about there being a possible conflict of interest with me helping with the PTA fundraiser, and, um, so I was advised by our board attorney to inform you that I am an unfranchise owner with Market America. In May, I actually disclosed this information to the attorney of the New York State Board Association. Both attorneys have assured me that there is no actual conflict of interest, since the Board of Education does not have a contract with the PTA, nor does it have any authority over PTA policies, programs, members, or offices. Market America offers to not-for-profit organizations the same web portal for fundraising purposes. The Eden Central PTA is registered for this website, and it registered in September of 2010, and I, like I had said, I have been working on various fundraisers with them since then, before I was even on the school board.
And Paul is not here. So we'll push him to the next meeting.
Well, I, I do have something. Can I make a comment on some things? Um, I have a couple of concerns. One is the, um, the buses. I had someone write me a letter. I had someone from North, um, North Boston write me a letter, and, and in it, they put information about undercoating our buses, because they had read the, um, they'd read the previous board information, how our buses are deteriorating. And I got thinking about it, and then I, I do know that Orchard Park does an undercoating on their buses. And I did call Rose and spoke to Rose, and Rose said that Springville does also. And Rose also did tell me that, um, when we contract new buses, we can get a five-year program with that. So, um, just, it's just bring something to light. And, um, the other issue that I'd like to bring up is, um, I, I'm, um, my son is on Eden Dolphins, and, um, last year, there was a dog that came in there constantly last year.
Came in where?
Came into the pool area, and with a, a young student, and they were very unaware of, you know, there was no adult with them. And some of the parents got very upset with it and said it was very unsanitary, and nobody really knew who was in charge, so I'm...
Of the dog? Or of dolphins?
Um, the parents that had children going to the Dolph- Eden Dolphins were concerned about the dog being in the pool area and unsanitary situation. And, um, there was no parent with the child, and, um, she was asked many times to have the dog removed. And this day and age, a lot of people have animals, and I love animals, and we have a dog, but I, I'm asking the board if we can put up some kind of a policy that the dogs don't belong in the school. The other day, I came in the school and somebody had a puppy. It was adorable. It doesn't belong in the school. I, I don't think, unless the board wants to have them in the, in the school.
Is there a policy debate on that?
Didn't we just look at a policy on seeing eye dogs and, and ponies?
And the, the small horse.
But I, I did read that. I did read that, Colin, but also the pony is to be trained, and so is the dog. They're not, um, they're not just casually... I, I see a lot of people just, um, bring their animals in and assuming that they're so cute, but it's, I think the school needs a policy that, um, the animals need to be left out.
As long as we're looking at building usage policy, we can look at that. And I'm thinking, there should be a responsible person for the group that's using the facility, and maybe there has to be a deposit, and if they don't follow the rules, then they lose their privileges, something like that.
You mean for bringing their animal in?
Well, that would be a violation of policy.
Let me check. I just think we're seeing...
Can I interrupt something?
Yeah.
I know that we, at, at the administrative table, have broached this subject a number of times, because I brought it up myself. Um, I can't answer whether there is a policy.
Yeah, I can.
But I believe that we have agreed that if animals have an educational function, they are acceptable in a classroom. In other words, if you're going to contract with Bosse's for fitch, or for turtles, or for something of that nature that serves an educational function, so that's fine, but for you to just, that will bring in an animal, I understand what you're talking about, and I remember the incident, and the only thing I can say to that is, um, when you have those outside groups coming into your building, you really need to get to the person that signed the permit or is in charge of that.
There was no permit. It was very casual on both occasions.
It was?
Yes. Very, very casual.
The dolphins are obligated, they have some...
Well, there, there has to be a, a something signed with the dolphins for them to use it.
There was nothing there, and the dolphins asked her to take...
The dolphins have a permit to use them.
Right.
They do, but the, but the, the child and the dog were very casual, and there was no parent, and she was asked many, many, many times, and the parents of the, um, children were very upset and wrote letters.
Well...
And again, this year, uh, two weeks ago, there's a young lady walking in the school with her puppy, and you put the puppy down, and, oh, they have an accident. He wears paper towels. It, it doesn't belong in the school. I don't...
In two separate parts, I think, as you're looking at, as separate as, as we just previously mentioned with building usage, I think that makes a lot of sense with outside groups, and then we would have to take a look inside, and maybe there are different policies that base in both.
It was very casual. They were going to a game or, uh, sporting event, so...
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
I think if you develop a policy, you need to be pretty specific because first class will pass, and I mean, we have...
This was very, very casual. I totally agree with you.
Okay, okay. Because some classrooms have given gifts, and they serve their purpose.
Snakes, rabbits.
Uh, next meeting is December 18th at 7:00 PM here. I, I move that the board enter executive session to discuss an administrative evaluation, the employment history of an individual, CSEA negotiations, and discussion regarding proposed litigation.
Second. All in favor? I. Opposed. Absention. Motion carries.